Well, that's okay. We'll wait for you. You've got 30 seconds. You're in charge.
That means I don't wash my hands.
No, you wash those hands, please.
He wants to be here and watch it from home.
Beth is making those plans, so that'll maybe I could just one second. These are what we approved in December. You're welcome. This is what you approved in December. Beth is making the plans.
Plans.
Okay.
We all approved it but one.
Is that what you were going for?
Did I not count correctly? I did. One, two, seven. They still have it. Yeah. It's what we have here in December. And then I'll be back with the plan a little bit later.
Oh, cool. I was just pulling up.
Maybe it doesn't go any higher.
Who swapped my chair?
Mine. I got swapped. Mine's really high today.
The ring is a little low.
Yes. Oh, that's really funny. I don't let folks know that I watch them.
Good evening. Before we get started, there's some handouts up front if you'd like. I think there's three, four?
Two.
An agenda and three documents on your answer.
So if you haven't picked up those, we'll be referencing them throughout the meeting tonight. All right, we'll call the meeting to order then. Welcome to our special town hall meeting talking about the Norm Fasteners Project. Really excited to invite the public in. This is one of many meetings we've had that has engaged the public. This is the most attended, so happy that you all are here. Hope you brought your questions and your comments because we brought the experts to be able to answer them. Before we get started, should we do a roll call?
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rosegrands?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll do the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence, so please stand if you're able. Join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now a moment of silence. Thank you. Welcome to those coming on in. There's some seats in the back, I think. No? There's one back there. You can sit by the incognito woman in orange back there.
You're gonna have to borrow Jennifer's glasses if we have to see the small.
Did you want to say something?
No, I said to Jennifer and Jack.
Are you sure? You don't want to say something?
Oh, you've got that one. How about you?
If you just joined us, there's some handouts up front you may want that will refer to throughout the meeting. All right, our first order of business tonight is to suspend the board rules, and I want to explain why we're temporarily suspending the board rules. Our board rules that the board operates under sets the template for special meeting agendas. Because we want this to be a town hall meeting where you all get to speak and hear and talk and ask questions, we need to suspend those rules for just this meeting. So I would ask one of my colleagues for a motion to suspend the rules temporarily for this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion, concerns? All right, we'll do a voice. Oh, no, we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosegrands?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
Thank you. So that leaves us free then to approve the agenda as written, or if anybody has any edits. Mostly, this is presentations from our experts who join us and then questions and comments from the public. Is there any adjustments to this agenda as presented? All right, then I entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as listed.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have ourselves an agenda. So welcome again, folks. We're really happy to have you here to talk about this project. Our formal presentation is broken up into three parts. The first is our staff presenting to you all and where we're at with the project, where the project has gone through, the process. That's our planning department planner, Miles, and our assessing department assessor, Beth. Following those two, we'll have folks that are involved in the project, the folks from LEAP, our economic development partners, Norm Fasteners, the company, and Dimaxion Development, who is the developer. And then to wrap up the presentations, some other folks will talk about our infrastructure issues and things we'll have to deal with as part of the project. Then we're gonna open it up to all of you. Because of the way we're structuring this special meeting, if you have comments that don't pertain to this project, you are still welcome to share them. We will not have a designated time at the end of the agenda for you to say other things. So if you have other things you'd like to say, and because this is a public meeting, you can come up and spend some time saying anything about anything to us. You can step up to the lectern at that time. We're only gonna engage in a back and forth with items on this project just to keep this town hall sort of functional today. We also have a regular meeting immediately following this where there will be another two opportunities for folks to address the board, one on items on the agenda and one on any item that you'd like to speak to. So if you want to stick around for that meeting, you are welcome to as well. To get us started, I'm gonna invite Miles up. Miles is our planner, has ushered this project through where we are today in partnership with the Planning Commission. And I know many of the Planning Commissioners are in the room as well. If you're a Planning Commissioner, you want to wave your hand around so folks know who you are. Thanks for joining us here. Go ahead, Miles.
Okay. Thanks for the introduction. As Ryan said, I'm Miles. I'm the township planner. I've been working in Bath Township for about three years now, and I'll kind of just go over what the timeline for this project was and kind of what the development review process looks like and kind of what led us to this point tonight. So the timeline, as I remember it, was, I think it was in late 2022 when we first started gaining some site investigation around, hey, does this site have three-phase power? Is there gas available? How many acres are there? What's the topography of the land? What's adjacent wetland conditions look like? So kind of all those normal things that a development company wants to know when they're trying to determine if it's a suitable site for the land use that they're attempting to place there. Then it was probably about early 2023 where we got more formal introductory site plans submitted to us. And then we took in an application in about mid-2023. And through the application process, what that kind of looks like for people that aren't familiar or never watched one of these developments go through that. It's similar in Bath to most communities in Michigan, which means that an applicant typically comes, they'll introduce the project to the community. So that's a first meeting that that takes place. Obviously, that's at the Planning Commission. Those meetings are always open to the public, and as somebody that goes to all the Planning Commission meetings, I would just encourage people while I'm up here, if you're interested in what's going on in Bath and how this community is developing, I always encourage you to be a part of those meetings. Then, after a project is introduced, it then goes through the process of getting a whole suite of site plans together. This covers every aspect of the building, kind of from the walls out. So how parking relates to the drives, how drives relate to traffic, how onsite lighting works, how land use type works adjacent to other land use types, any buffering that may be required. So buffering is when you have two land use types that are in conflict. So in the case of this development, we had a single-family home next to this development, so that was seen as a potential land use conflict. And so kind of the way to mitigate that is through buffering. That typically takes the form of fencing and landscaping, so that all gets reviewed. So anyways, the developer will put together a whole suite of plans that speak to all these different aspects of the site. Then that full set of plans, which typically on any development will take the form of anywhere from eight to 15, 20 pages, 20 sheets, go out for something called agency review. That's when the suite of plans are reviewed by not only township personnel like myself, assessing, building, police, fire, but also Eagle, the Health Department, Consumers Energy, really any agency or regulatory body that has any kind of regulatory or policing authority that's gonna have some stake in this development. Obviously, developments like this and even smaller have a lot of infrastructure that feeds into them, sewer, water, roads, fiber, gas. And so that agency feedback is critical when these developments come before the Planning Commission, so they can feel like they're making a decision with full information. So that happened, and then I think we went back to the Planning Commission again about mid-2023, maybe getting into fall of 2023 by this time. And I don't, at that point, they would have been eligible for a vote following a public hearing, which was noticed in a local newspaper circulation. And we are required by state law to send out mailers to every property that is within 300 feet of the property in question. At the time, the property had not been subdivided from the original parent parcel, which was 40 acres, so it went out 300 feet based upon that parent parcel. I believe we didn't get a vote at that meeting, though. I think we went maybe two or three meetings after that. There was some back and forth between what the Planning Commission wanted to see in conditions and what the developer wanted. And I would say with any kind of medium to large commercial development, that's typical, getting a vote in one meeting, it isn't normal. It's not that it was necessarily a problem. It's just that there's a lot of wheels that are moving around. There's a lot of moving parts, and so these factors have to be vetted out. In the end, they did end up getting an approval of the site plan and a recommendation for approval of the special use permit, at which point in the process is then moved up to the Board of Trustees. And they did, again, an introductory meeting with the Board of Trustees and then an approval meeting at their next meeting, where I believe they did get a vote at that second meeting. And that is when it moves into the realm of the Building Department and staff to make sure all conditions are met and everything is in place as was submitted to the township before any building permits can get issued, which is basically the phase that we are at now. And as I understand it, this, just so we're clear with everyone, this meeting tonight was by no means a condition of this development. This is, I think, just a good faith effort from township leadership to help staff and the public and everyone understand where everyone's at and just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Thanks, Miles.
Okay.
Karen, could you pull up the site on the screens for folks? There's still some seats available in the room if y'all want to not stand in the hall. If you'd like to, feel free, folks in the back, feel free to take the seats. It may be a long time to stand. Next up is Beth Potkey, our assessor.
My time's up. Well, my part will be short. Miles is the one that's taking the lead on this and taking most of it. So my part will be the Public Act 198. It's also known as an IFT, Industrial Facility Tax. Norm Fasteners came to Township. I think we received the first application in September, wanting to apply for a PA 198. Then we had, the district that was proposed was the 40 acres, but the district, when they request it, needs to be site-specific. So we needed to get it down to that 19 acres prior to. So we did all the land division process, and we narrowed it down to where the site was gonna be actually located. So then we got our amended application in October, and the township board moved forward from there, creating a district and creating, accepting the application from the applicant. And then we moved forward from there. Right now, we are working on our letter of agreement with Norm Fasteners, and then it will be, end up going to the State Tax Commission, and they're the ones that will actually grant the certificate on that IFT, Public Act 198. So that's where we stand right now with that.
Thanks, Beth. So at this point, if I understand this right, Beth and Miles, what has been approved by the board is the PA 198 partial tax abatement, the site plan, and the district, the creation of the 19 acres for the district for the abatement. Is that correct?
And conditionally.
Conditionally approved, thank you. And there's 18 conditions?
18 conditions.
Great, thank you. So let's move into the folks who are actually, who have actually been on the ground level of this, engaging with our staff. We'll start with our friends from Lansing Economic Area Partnership, or LEAP, and I think, Jacqueline.
Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Jacqueline Hutchison. I am the Economic Development Manager with the Lansing Economic Area Partnership, and I serve Clinton County. Also, a little preface, I am sharing my loan capacity with a little tiny human growing inside me, so you'd be surprised how out of breath I can get. So bear with me as I go through this. But LEAP has worked with Norm Fasteners since 2017, trying to get them to land here in the Lansing region.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure. Let me see if I can. Can you hear me better?
Mmm, if you use the mic, that's great.
Okay, let's see. Okay. Oh, there we go. I think I might have turned it on. Anyway.
Jacqueline, you can hold it if you want.
That's okay. I'll just talk a little closer.
I didn't want you to squish the other development you're working on.
Right. So we worked alongside all of the partners that are actually here tonight in 2023. So, ooh, that is loud. But Norm Fasteners, their new facility here in Bath Township will bring over 200 new jobs and create $77 million in investment right here in Bath Township. This is really awkward. These new jobs in the community will have an average wage of $31.40, which surpasses the region's average of $23. It's also important to note that these jobs are not dependent on the typical auto manufacturer's ebbs and flows like other auto suppliers as they serve construction and agricultural fields as well. Our biggest role, as Beth had talked about, was the IFT. We've supported that. We've also supported Bath Township with a $3.9 million grant for their sewer infrastructure enhancements. So that's kind of like what we have been working on mostly.
Thanks, Jacqueline.
Hi there. My name is Kristin Schleman, and I work for the MEDC or the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. I'm the Business Development Manager that works for Region 7, which is this region and covers Clinton County. I work very closely with LEAP whenever we look to, you know, attract projects and incentivize and support them. I have been working with Norm for over two years now and just want to make sure that I'm letting the public know that our process is very long. We have an incredible roadmap of stipulations, a lot of due diligence, and we're very excited about this project. I can say as a community member that lives just down the road over in Hawks Nest, my girls went to the Rockin' House here. Their babysitter lives across the street over in the apartments, and I'm excited that this project is coming forward. I think it's great for Bath Township. I think it's transformational for this area. I think that we need to work to keep our young people here and create some good jobs so that we're not losing everyone out of the state, and I'm happy to take any questions later on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Both. What you see on the screen is the development area, and to orient yourself where we are, we are sitting in the building at the very top. Will you point out where the township building is, Karen? There it is. So you can see directly south of here is the portion of land that we're talking about. We'll show you the building schematic in a moment as well. Let's bring up the actual company who we're inviting into our community, represented by their Michigan, or you're the US guy, right?
Well, yes, this is only our only location in North America.
No, you just gotta own it. You just gotta own it. You're the North American guy. Corey, welcome.
Thank you. Well, for those of you who don't know me yet, my name is Korai Gurbuz, and I've been with Norm since 2016. I am the General Manager and Business Unit Director of Norm Fasteners Co. Since 2018, that's the year we were established. And just to make, not a correction, but an update on how long we've been working with LEAP and MEDC is since 2016. So we started with LEAP and MEDC in 2016 because we were not sure whether we would like, where we would like to be in the United States. And we've been, we've been working with MEDC and LEAP and other agencies in the United States since then. And the first operations we started in 2018 was a warehousing, engineering, and sales in Lansing area. And since then, in our five-year business plan, we had a program to invest in a manufacturing site within the United States. That was the original plan, and within five years, including the one and a half year of COVID, we are here. And we've been working with the manufacturing investment for over two years now, looking at potential options, locations within the United States that include neighbors, neighboring states like Ohio, Indiana, and Texas. In addition to that, we've looked into Canada and Mexico as well for our investments. And with the help of and the support from local governments and also our partners here at Dimaxion, we have decided to do this investment in Michigan. So after a few different potential locations, as we have, as we work with LEAP and MEDC in Michigan, we've chosen a few different areas, and at the end, here we are at Bath, hoping to create 200 jobs in the next five years and invest on over $77 million in the project itself. And for any questions, and Norm, let me introduce a little bit about Norm. Norm Fasteners, Norm Holding was established in 1973 in Turkey. So this is our 51st year in the industry. We are the, by far, the biggest manufacturer of fasteners in Turkey and within the top five in EU region, European Union region. And we have over 4,000 employees, 4,500 employees worldwide. We have locations in Romania, Poland, Germany, France, and obviously the UK. And as next year, we will have also another warehouse and operations center in Morocco. So this is news as well. So we are serving not only automotive industry but also agriculture equipment producers. If you are using any John Deere products in your farms or facilities, most likely you're using some of our products as well. And we are suppliers to automotive OEMs, agriculture equipment producers, heavy-duty vehicles and construction, as well electronics, white house goods, brown house goods, too. In some of our meetings in the past, I've handed out some papers regarding Norm Fasteners. So for any of you who want to know more, you could visit our webpage at normholding.com, or please contact me, and I'll be more than happy to provide additional information for you. Some of our customers, Ford, Stellantis is a new one. I'm not gonna mention a name, but one of the biggest EV producers based in California is also our customer. And we're constantly looking to grow in the United States and in the world as well. And I believe that this is a good chance for all the community here and Norm Fasteners as well to be able to grow in the United States, especially considering the fact that the world is changing very fast and economic conditions are changing very fast. So this decision was made about two years ago, and the last two years, we've come so far with the help of the board and the Planning Committee and everyone probably in this room as well. And I'll be more than happy to take any questions forward.
Craig, could you just also tell why the, why the leadership of Norm has an interest in this area? That there's a connection, they're not strangers to our area?
Sure. Well, this is a family-owned business, so three generations are still running the business. And the second generation, sorry, the third generation, two brother and sister. The brother is an MSU graduate. And Jeff and Matt are our president, our vice presidents and CEOs, classmates or college mates from MSU. He still has deep roots here, and they do work as well. In addition to our job, they do, they do some investments together in the US. And that's why it's very important for us to be here. And actually, one of the reasons was why Norm chose Lansing was because of these gentlemen and their support.
Thank you, Corey.
Sure.
Speaking of these gentlemen and their support, would you like to join us? These are representatives from Dimaxion Development, the development company.
I feel like I'm facing the audience this time instead of the board. But first, I'd like to thank the supervisor, Funes Bliss, and the board for holding this town hall. I think it's a good move when there's a lot of questions in the public about what's going on to just have an open forum like this. My name is Jeff Dean with Dimaxion Development, and I am, my job as the developer here is just to pull together all the various pieces of something like this. We work directly with the end user, in this case, Norm Fasteners. Then we have to communicate with all of the various agencies and governmental authorities, private landowners, involved in this type of process. So I think that Miles actually did a great job throughout this whole process, including explaining how the process worked at the beginning of this meeting. There's been no shortage of communication in this process. We've probably spent, as a development company, we probably spent on average between one and two hours independently and privately with each Planning Commissioner, some of which are present tonight, as well as each sitting board member. So all of the folks involved in making decisions and voting, I think, were very well-educated. They asked us a lot of very difficult questions. We were, this was by no means, you know, ushered in without raking us over the coals. We spent, you know, many, many hours answering difficult questions about things like environmental impacts, things like, you know, that some of the folks from MEDC and from LEAP mentioned, exactly how does this affect the community economically from a wages standpoint, from an employment standpoint, difficult questions about traffic patterns. And all these things resulted in us, you know, doing our best to, you know, hire skilled professionals such as engineers to answer a lot of these questions, some of which are well within our wheelhouse and some of which are, you know, require a little bit of additional understanding. All that being said, you know, as Korai from Norm Fasteners mentioned, this company is near and dear to us. What he didn't mention is that the current vice president was actually a Bath Township resident during his time in college. So when they were thinking where they wanted to locate in the United States, really, or in all of North America, because even other countries in North America were considered, you know, his time here in Bath was a valuable part of that conversation. That stacked on with our kind of endorsement of Bath as a community. Some of you know our company. Some of you look new in the room, but we've been doing business in Bath here now for a number of years. And it's not always been perfect, but our experience has been but our experience has been that the folks in the community and the folks that are elected are intelligent people and are willing to have intelligent conversations regardless of if, if people always agree or disagree on subjects. So for us as a development company, that level of predictability and understanding of both the community and the elected, elected body carries a lot of weight because, you know, depending on which community you're in, sometimes these conversations are very difficult to have. Any, any development like the one that we're, that we're engaged in doing down the street doesn't come without a tremendous impact to the community, and we're very cognizant of that. Everything from, you know, what, what the everyday experience of driving by the thing looks like to, you know, how the tax revenue affects the school systems and the police and fire departments. So weaving all those various things together is a, is a big effort, and we, that's our job, and we do that every day. So we've, we've made the, the offer every time we've been here, which has been probably 10 times for this project in a public meeting, that we're available, our cell phone numbers are available, you're welcome to personally reach out to us and express any concerns or ask any questions at any given time. So that'll continue.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
George, Cindy, if you want to take a seat, there's some up front. Next up on the list is our representative from SCUMA, talking about some of our infrastructure needs. So I'll ask Brad to join us. And Brad, some of the questions that the board has been getting over and over and over again is about water testing.
... they need. With that being said, Norm Fasteners would be a significant industrial user due to the quantity of discharge that they would be discharging to the sewer system, and also the potentials associated with the products that they're creating. With the information they've given us, fully confident that there shouldn't be any issues, but again, we'll be monitoring that on a monthly basis at a minimum. And that frequency will go up or down depending on ultimately their discharge quality. They will have to meet the ordinances that the township has set forth for quality standards. Anything outside of that, the process of regulations will begin in a corrective manner to get it back in regulated states. The big one that everybody always concerns with metal finishing is PFOS, because that is the buzzword, or PF O A, or PF AS, and then any of the other thousands of other substrates. Metal finishing, the unique thing about metal finishing, if you've done the research on PFOS, typically it's associated with a surfactant that was actually required by OSHA and air quality standards inside the building for hexavalent chrome and some of the other acid products. Again, there's no guarantee that there wouldn't be some level of one of the thousands of chemicals that can be introduced into water through the process. But again, our background through Bath Township is a zero in parts per trillion. So we would obviously see that, and corrective actions would have to take place if those were found. But that is not typically an industry issue anymore since PFOS was founded as, as an air quality issue in the metal finishing world.
How soon would you know, Brad, if something like that was introduced to SCUMA's system?
It'd be a monthly, a monthly scenario.
Okay.
Yep, that'd be based on the permitted, permitted sample frequency.
All right, thank you. We'll open up questions in just a moment. We have one more speaker, our esteemed superintendent. There are some road projects that are happening in concurrence with this project, not necessarily because of this project, but that will, folks will feel out here on Webster Road. So I've asked the superintendent to share what those are, and then number two is traffic has been a big question from folks as well.
Sure, thank you. So Webster Road is set to be milled and filled, which means they will crumble up the asphalt and be laying down a new base on Webster Road. At the same time, they will be also installing new and improved sidewalks through a Safe Routes to School grant that we received, I believe, last year for this year. It is at this time undetermined whether the Webster Road project, because it's not related to this, if that will start this year or if that will start next year. We've been made aware this week of some changes at the Road Commission, and we may see that construction project happen next year. Next year also, we'll be looking at a project on Chandler Road, which is also significant to drains, sewer infrastructure, and the road, road and safety as well. So we will keep the community posted through Facebook, through our website, of when those projects are starting. You may have noticed some electronic signs that are out front. The Clinton County Road Commission has been utilizing those to help everyone be prepared for when either tree, tree clearing or construction is about to begin. We will also be working with the Clinton County Road Commission to make sure that you can all make it to an on or off ramp and back to your home safely during that time without trying to inconvenience anyone. And it will occur during what I think will be a big election year as well, so we will be cognizant to all of those things that people need to come to the township or in the area for and try to make it less painful for residents that live on Webster Road. We also, in terms of traffic counts each time, and I think Miles could speak to this better than I could, but each time there is a project of the significance, the Clinton County Road Commission does traffic counts, and we're aware of what traffic, if it's increasing or decreasing, or what that pattern might be, right down to the hour. So we will be able to look at that data and understand what is happening in the area. If, if in fact Somerset was to expand or something else in the area, it may necessitate a definal, additional traffic measure, such as possibly a light or routing traffic in a certain way. So we will be, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yep, these have been in, in process for some time now. Webster Road is a major project that's been on the books late, last year, I think.
Yep.
Yeah. So we've been working closely with the Clinton County Road Commission to try to time the sidewalk improvements as well as the improvements on Webster Road for about the same time, so it'll have hopefully minimal impact on residents.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Miles, would you mind talking just a little bit about the traffic pieces that went through the planning commission?
Yeah.
I just know that that's a, I got, I have some emailed questions from residents who can be here, and that's part of it, so I thought we could address that right away. Thanks, Miles.
So I didn't go into too much of the site details when I was speaking earlier, because I thought there'd be a number of questions that would come up, and I didn't want to reiterate things. But just on the traffic side of things, yeah, it's a fair question. It's a large facility, they're going to have a lot of employees, around 200, we hope, at some point. It sounds like that's the goal. What's that going to do to traffic? So what we tried to engage in at the planning commission was talk about staggering shifts. One thing that's kind of nice about having one large land use come in with 200 employees as opposed to, let's say, that 40 acres builds 200 homes, is because they're employees and because employees are tied to shift times, you can determine when volumes of traffic are going to happen. You have a little bit of control there, as opposed to like 200 homes where it's just a free-for-all. They're kind of going to come and go whenever, whenever they need to get groceries or whatever else. You can't, there's not too many ways you can control for that. So we looked at, in conjunction with the Clinton County Road Commission and our township engineer, what are the peak times right now? And we did some sampling to understand what those traffic flows look like, and then we worked with Norm Fastener on our conditions to say, these are the time periods where we'd like shifts to occur, and we'd like them, the shift changes to happen in these off-peak times. So that's, I guess, probably the heaviest-hitting mechanism we use to try to delay some of the traffic concerns. Other than that, I think the superintendent did a good job of speaking about, right now there is build-out capacity in that road. You'll notice that that portion of Webster Road has wider shoulders. It's right off of an interstate, it's a Class A road. So I think there's always been kind of the plan from at least MDOT's perspective, and they're the authority that has a lot of control over that specific area of Webster. They own a lot of the property and the easements there, and they obviously place the access to the highway there. For some, because typically along stretches of interstate, those exits build out over time, so that capacity has been laid in to that area. Obviously, with how Bath has built over the years, it's never needed to be tapped into. Now, obviously, the southern portion of Bath, as I'm sure most people in this room, has started to experience growth, starting in maybe the early 2000s. We've all seen that. I know even in my time here, I think I've seen that. And as developments will come in the future, we're going to have to constantly analyze what our traffic patterns look like and need to make determinations about things like dedicated right-turn lanes, deep approach angles, deceleration lanes. I know right now, I think the standard has been like 25, 35 feet in the township, and now, especially if some of you live in the Hawk Hollow area, we're looking at going to 45 to 55 feet. So if you are trying to make that turn, you can slow down a little bit so somebody's not behind you doing 45. So there are 100 different ways that traffic can be mitigated. I guess I'm just trying to reassure people that as traffic changes, we will change with it.
Thanks, Miles. Lastly, Superintendent, if I could put you on the spot one last time, can you talk about what we're doing with the sewer system, sort of in conjunction with this project that's sort of a bigger township support-wide effort?
Sure. With the grant that we received from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which was, I think, 3.8 million, we will be able to build an equalization system that will hold the waste and release it at other off-peak times, I believe, to release it, so that everything isn't headed towards do it at the same time. It's, our, our engineers are actually here, if you'd like them to expound more on that. They, they deal with that every day, so they're more of experts than I am. But I would invite Kevin Gritters, if you would, wouldn't mind to talk about that.
Of course not.
Thanks, Kevin.
I'm Kevin Gritters with Prentice Newhoff, Consulting Engineer for the township. So the project that the superintendent is referencing is a project that has been on the township's master plan for quite a while now. The first phase of it was built, I can't remember the year, a few years ago. Large diameter, deep sewer, and it does exactly what Karen mentioned. It provides large volume here in this area that then can be released, pumped out over time, so that the peak flows are not all heading downstream at the same time. The project that we're talking about now is an extension of the project from a couple of years ago that will extend that large diameter, deep sewer through this project site in a way that can increase the volume of that equalization storage. So it was discussed early on with the developer and the applicant to do this project in conjunction with the site work here. They can go, they don't necessarily have to, but they can, and it can be worked out that they go hand-in-hand with the site work and the completion of that project. So it addresses the extra volume that the township needs, and it also provides for eliminating one of your existing lift stations also, so that, that's a big benefit to not have to have another lift station, reduces the amount of operation and maintenance and electrical costs that you have for that station. So checks a number of boxes, and that's what we've been working through overall.
So my understanding is we're leveraging this project to get funding from our friends at MEDC to do something that we've been needing to do for a while or planning to do for a while. Is that a fair way to describe that?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to all the folks that have joined us today to give their expertise. They're all ready and waiting for your questions. Because we have folks watching at home via Facebook, we're going to need folks to come up to the lectern. I know it can be intimidating, but we're all friendly here, I promise. Come up to the lectern and use the microphone so folks can hear you, both in the room but also at home. So if you have a question, a comment, remember this can be on any topic. The only questions and comments we'll engage with tonight, though, will be on this Norm Fasteners project. Please help yourself up to the lectern, and we will try to answer as best we can.
That's a race.
Do you like my name and address and all that stuff?
Your name would be wonderful, but it's up to you.
Ray Easton, I live at 14261 Lawson Road, about a mile, a mile west of here. I have a bunch of questions, and I wrote them down as I went to listen to all the presenters there, but the first one, I'm not aware, I'm not familiar with Turkey. What kind of government does Turkey have?
It's a, well, should I take answers right now?
Could you give all your questions at first, because we want the folks to come, it's a little awkward, to come up and use the microphones themselves?
Okay, okay. Just start listing questions?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is the operation a 24/7/365? The, is there water detention on the site? What noise will be involved? The water source, I haven't heard the water source, I've heard the water discharge. Investment sounds nice, 77 million. Third generation is impressive. That's just comments. The PFAS, what, what limit does SCUMA allow for PFAS discharge to their, to their disposal site? The deceleration lane, who pays for that? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey, do you want to start by talking about the government of Turkey?
Well, well, it's the election year here, so I don't know. I think it's a great question. Turkey is first and foremost a secular country and still is a republic, and we have a government which is a bit right side, a little bit more religious, but it's a secular country since 1923.
Also democratically elected?
Yes, democratically elected. The election was last year. We have presence in the system as of 2018, and we, our president was elected last year for the, for his final term, and it's going to be again, you know, in four, five years, sorry, Turkey.
And you're a NATO member?
Yes, we are a NATO member since, one of the NATO members, yes, an important one as well. If you follow the news, if you follow the news, especially last year or a year and a half ago, since the Russia-Ukraine crisis, there's been some talks about Sweden, Finland becoming a member of NATO, and Turkey has, has, has accrued it, and that was one of the terms.
How much influence does the government have on this project here in Bath?
They don't have any influence. This is a private company, 100% privately owned, family-owned company. It's just one of our growth programs that we have worked on. As I had mentioned, in 2018, we had our five-year business plan, and that was also mentioned on that business plan, trying to have the manufacturing investment project started in the fourth and the fifth year, and which we did.
Corey, is Turkey a trade partner with the U.S.?
We, we have trade agreements, yes.
Yeah.
I don't remember the year, it should be in 1990s, but...
I know you guys ship cherries to us, right? A lot of cherries?
It's, well, cherries, I think Michigan is doing well enough, but...
My uncle's a cherry farmer, so I've heard a lot about Turkish cherries coming in.
Well, you know, we are not here to bring cherries, but for your information, since it's mentioned, Norm Holding is also an owner of an agricultural company which produced, which produces dried fruit and exports them, not only those, but addition to that. So we do have, especially for, in terms of sustainability, not only our own products that we do for our manufacturing, but also we have other investments that are directly related to agriculture.
Can you talk about the operational timeframe of the plant, if it's going to be 24/7/365, I think was the question?
Sure, it's, sure, it's going to be, it's going to be, well, this is a, let me go back a bit, a bit then, because we are talking about, you know, our, our friend said it's a metal finishing company. We are not a metal finishing company. We are a complete, full-service fastener producer.
Fastener what?
Fastener producer.
Fastener producer?
Bolts, nuts, screws, special parts, we produce these. So in your cars, in your vehicles, in your, in your refrigerators, in your furniture, there are all these little pieces that brings parts together or the machines together. So we produce products similar to those. So the project itself is a two-to-three-phase project. So our intention, and since, since day one, we've been talking about this, we don't plan to do everything in-house in day one. So we're not even going, we're not even do, we're not going to be doing any coating or plating operations in day one. This could come in day, year three, four, after the first phase is, is completed. So it's a, it's a, some of the processes are 365 days, it's three shifts, but most of the processes are five, five days. So if that answers your question. And it's a three-shift project, so when we're talking about number of 200 people, it's not 200 people being at the facility at the same time. So...
Thank you, Corey. Go ahead, Jeff.
Miles, you're on deck.
I was just going to answer the remainder of the gentleman's question. So one question that he asked was water detention. that he asked was water detention. So there's two types of water detention that will, will occur on-site. One is stormwater, so all the water that falls on the site from the air, you know, will be collected in detention onsite and then discharged after it's physically treated at the surface. And then any water that's used in the facility will also be held and treated onsite in the facility before being discharged out into the municipal sewer system. And I think the final question, oh, you also asked what the water source is. The site is served by municipal water, so I believe it's Board of Water and Light out here. So the water will come directly from Board of Water and Light. And then the final question that I had was what's, what, you'd asked what SCUMA's allowable discharge rates were. I don't know if it was off the top of my head, but Mr. Gersky could probably answer that question.
There was a question, Jeff, about noise, too?
Um, what was the question? I didn't write that one down.
How much?
Oh, okay, good question. Noise level. This was one that, like, how much noise is the facility actually gonna produce? There were a couple of planning commissioners and board members that really put us through the wringer on this one. So Mr. Kari actually did a study on it, so I'll invite him up to answer that question.
Actually, it's not a study. It's the real facts. We gathered the information from Turkey, which is also collected on a regular basis. We shared this information with the, with the, I think it was a planning committee then. We gave all the information, depending on even the distance and what is the noise levels in different distances, and it was approved, and it's not gonna be anything different than you will hear a car going by Webster Road, not at all times.
You have a light plant in Turkey that's here in Bath?
Sorry?
A light plant?
We have a, yeah, of course. We have, in Turkey, all right, then, a little bit more information if you-
Not in Bath, he's saying in Turkey.
Yeah.
A light plant in Turkey that you can build here. You're talking about noise, that exists?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, similar. I mean, we produce in Turk, we have thirteen factories in Turkey, manufacturing sites in Turkey, similar to this, fasteners, all fasteners. And we produce around two-hundred, we have a capacity of two-hundred-thousand metric tons, which is about four-hundred-fifty-million pounds of product a year. That's our whole capacity in Turkey, Norm Holding's whole capacity. The investment here is going to start at seven-thousand-five-hundred-eight-thousand metric tons, which is twenty-fifth of what we produce in Turkey, and we hope that we will grow it up to twenty-thousand tons, which is one-tenth of what we are doing right now. So we're not talking about a huge production facility if you consider the whole investment of what we're doing right now.
Thanks, Kari. I know there's a question for Brad for SCUMA, and Miles, could you tackle the deceleration lane cost question? So the question was, what was the, what is the limit for PFAS in the SCUMA system?
Yeah, so PFAS itself is a water quality standard of twelve parts per trillion. SCUMA would require a zero, non-detect, because PFAS is not readily treatable. We can't actively take on any additional capacity there, so zero would be the number there. But careful with the terms there, just to be clear. So PFAS is a general term for a broad range of chemicals associated in, in this field. And those, again, probably the easiest list would be on Eagle's website under the PFAS tab. There's lots of exciting information there, but that's all water quality standard-based, and it's ever-changing on there. But that's what we have to follow.
Thank you. After Miles speaks, we'll have another person come up with comment or question.
Okay. The deceleration lane, so I brought up deceleration lane earlier as an aspect that can help mitigate traffic flow and traffic increasing. If the superintendent could pull up the PDF real quick. Yeah, so you'll see on this PDF, on the south side of the site, there's actually a drive that's coming down, and that drive is hooking into kind of that circular area there. That's Food Court Lane. So they won't actually have a deceleration lane for this. What it's gonna be more like is people are familiar with the industrial park. Right now, we have the food bank there in the back, so just, just south of this site. Almost be like Food Court Lane is more of an entryway into industrial park, taking a lot of that traffic off of that area. And there's smaller deceleration lanes there currently. If those deceleration lanes need to be widened at any time, we'd likely, you know, there's a number of ways it could get paid for, including special assessments to the industrial sites, including some kind of road millage, including some kind of grant. All of our roads in Bath Township are owned, operated, and controlled by the Clayton County Road Commission. So at the end of the day, they would be the government body that would make a determination on how that should take. At this time, we didn't feel like that approach or de-proach needed to be altered anyway, because we're taking most of that traffic onto the side street and off of the Class A road.
Thanks, Miles. Thanks, Mr. Easton, for your questions.
Do I have amendments?
Yeah, real quick. And then, and then we're gonna go to Tanya. Go on up to the, so folks can hear you.
Food Court and County Road?
No.
It's, 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 it's,
Including us and the individuals residents as well will have to adapt to these changes. Right now, we're not going to be able to talk about fourteen, fifteen, sixteen dollars of wages. You know, once your competitors or your neighboring companies are offering a lot higher. So it's going to be more difficult than what it is today, and we are aware of that. Not only us, our headquarters are aware of that.
Thanks, Cory. I have a question that was emailed in, I think for Jeff, you're probably the best. They didn't name you, I'm thinking you're the best to answer. This is from one of our residents, Brian Jeffs, who couldn't be here tonight. He says aesthetics is an issue. The building is huge. The location is right across from our Welcome to Bath sign on Webster Road. That is a nice welcome. I think that's being facetious there. Do we want to have the building, do we want to have this building be one of the first things people see when getting off the expressway? I know you've done some things to limit that.
Did you just choose me because my name is Jeff?
From one Jeff to another.
Well, from one Jeff to another, I agree with his position. It is a huge building, and huge buildings are a big aesthetic challenge for us. But it's not something that's lost on us. So we see it as, as there's a, you know, we're going to do as much as we can to address that question. So we've talked about this in previous meetings, both in the Planning Commission and at the Board of Trustees level. But there are some fairly simple things that we can do as a developer who's kind of pulling the strings with the architects involved to break up big surfaces. You know, if you have a two or three hundred foot long wall, it's twenty or thirty foot tall, and it's all one big color, it shows up as a big, huge thing when you try to comprehend it. Or when your eyes kind of translate that to your brain. But if you've ever seen camouflage before, the same concept can apply in an architectural way. Through simple things like color blocking and just a little bit of variegation and a little bit of undulation and how you put the building together. In addition to that, landscape buffers go a heck of a long way. And on this site specifically, it's actually benefited by a slope that slopes away from Webster Road. So whereas if you're looking at the site from Webster Road right now, it's kind of a topographical mess. You can't really tell if it's a hill or a valley. But when you analyze the actual soil volumes that are there, the site's going to come down from the road level. So that'll help with the perception of the building being tall. So with our various designs, we've kind of focused on the landscape buffering and then the color blocking and undulation to address that. And it's still, you know, it's still going to be there, and it's still going to be a big, proud building. And we hope that we make it look as aesthetically pleasing as possible with that in mind. And I also want to add something to the wage issue. And I think we should all be happy, actually, as, you know, residents of this community that hopefully our friends and children will have opportunities at good paying jobs. I mean, I certainly know a lot of people who have left because they couldn't make enough money around here. So I kind of have a different, maybe directly opposite view of how wages would affect the community. I would hope that, I would hope that Norm could pay as much as possible so that the folks that sit in this room who either end up working there or their children or neighbors work there can earn a good living. So I think it's actually a good thing that they pay a good amount of money.
I was saying like a difference, though, because, yeah, they pay that much more than all of so many businesses that have been very dang high paying the max if they can. Well, I'm going to jump ship and go get eight dollars more an hour at this new factory. I mean, I know that's life and that's how it goes, but when you have invested in your township your entire life, like I'm a fourth generation, I don't want to close my business. You know, I mean, it's just one of those things that's just a broader, there are so many people that have had generation after generation of family members that are owning companies in Bath. And I can easily see, do they all deserve a great wage? Absolutely, but it's just not as feasible in a small town like Bath. We're not East Lansing and Oklahoma St. Lansing where there's a large pool to pull from. You can only pull from so much of an area.
Sure.
So it's just something that I'm hoping is on your guys' radar to what that could possibly do to the people that are, I don't think these jobs are all going to go to Bath people.
Sure. No, appreciate the question, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. I saw a gentleman here in the green coat. Go ahead and step up to the microphone if you would.
Sure.
As a parent that use your services, Tanya, we don't want you to close either.
My name is Tom Gotchak, and I live at six-two-four-five Hilltop Court. The condo's up the street here. And my question is probably similar in regards to the employees. Will you be bringing in other people from Turkey? Will you be hiring local? And are they going to be required to be citizens? Not citizens, I'm just talking US citizens. As a home builder, we have to sign forms that you're a citizen. I'm all about immigration because my grandpa came here from Germany and great-grandma from Poland, so that's all good. But a lot of weird stuff going on with the illegal stuff right now. So I think that's legitimate to know. Because I do know there's a couple of battery factories that I know darn well there's that are not in this town but are being built with people who are not legal people here. That's my question, and I don't mind asking it.
Thanks, Mr. Gotchak. Cory, are you the best person to ask, to answer that? Will you be importing talent?
Definitely, as a company, we do not employ any illegal person in our companies all around the world, including Turkey, Germany, Romania, Poland, and the US. And it's going to be the obvious, you know, rule. We are not going to be doing anything against the rules or laws. So everyone is going to be legally have the right to work in the United States. And to your question, we plan to bring some people from Turkey with work permits, yes. But this is less than five, ten percent of the first phase and less than, it is less than ten percent, yeah, five percent, actually, of the whole rate of two hundred. So we don't plan to bring more than six or eight people in total.
Thanks, Cory.
The rest is going to be all, what's that?
The mass citizens still have work permits.
They will have work permits, like.
Two years.
I don't want to be going into too details, but there are different, you know, ways for people to be able to work and live in the United States. I'm one of them. I got my green card last year. I had a different visa type before. And as of last year, I have the permanent residency, which will have, you know, the time. So whoever's going to come from Turkey, if, and this is of course a different procedure, which you have to go, will be legally be able to work and live in the United States as long as they're here.
Thanks, Cory.
Four years still up there. Could you give a specific timetable? I'm Dean Walker, I live about a mile from here. Timetable for construction, for training people, for when you're going to have your two hundred people hired?
Well, these are, of course, everyday changing realities, unfortunately. I mean, we are here trying to express, and we understand fully your concerns. And these are all perfect questions, by the way, and I appreciate you giving us the chance to express who we are and what we're trying to do. So the timeframe is within, by the end of 2026, we would like, by 2025, excuse me. By the end of 2025, we'd like to have everything done, ready, and in operation. And the training is going to start second half of 2025, if everything goes as planned.
Thanks, Cory. Judy, you want to come up to the microphone?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, my name is Judy Gardi. I live at six-zero-nine-zero Park Lake Road. Mike, I have several concerns about this. One, it seems like it all is happening so fast. I know I attend a lot of Township Board meetings, and I think the first time I heard about this was about five months ago. Second, I, so I think that the, I think it's just moving too fast for us to make sure that all the safeguards are taken care of. Secondly, this sounds like a great industrial project. I don't see this land as industrial land. This is rural farmland, and I, I really think we ought to think hard about what we put there. And I don't think that this plant belongs there. I think this plant belongs in an industrial park. The next thing I'm concerned about are the environmental standards. Not only the water pollution, but the air pollution and the noise pollution and the light pollution and the traffic. I live right by sixty-nine. Four hundred and twenty thousand cars or vehicles go down that road every week. It's noisy. Those are just cars. So I just worry about all of these things that I feel that are important to us. I know jobs are important, I know we need employment. I'm not saying that we don't need jobs, but I don't think that this is right for our community. I think it's been pushed through too fast. I'm deeply concerned about the environmental protections, especially for the water table. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Miles, would you mind addressing some of that? Timetable, happening fast, making sure we're doing the right checks and balances. Maybe you could talk about some of those other eighteen conditions?
Yeah.
That relate to those?
Okay, so there was a lot in there. So in terms of timetables, one thing we've tried to do here at Bath is not get into the realm of trying to predict timetables. I think as anyone's as aware, and I joke about my wife talking to me about this a lot. The Trader Joe's in Meridian Township, if we were all taking bets on when that was going to open, I think we'd all be out money by now. It's very hard in the development world to predict timetables because there's a lot of moving parts. We're working on different agreements as a part of the eighteen conditions with the developer. Many of those agreements are affecting the timetable because we want X, they want Y. There are soil that has to be removed, retaining walls have to be built, engineering has to go into that. And we are re-analyzing and re-certifying every set of plans we look at. So it takes a lot of time. So that's why, you know, you've seen a lot of equipment staged over there, but kind of little action from the equipment as it's related to this development. I know some people have seen some action, and they think it's related because some bulldozers are moving some dirt. That's more to do with the road project we're doing. So there's been a little bit of confusion. The reason there's been inaction is because of the efforts that are being made on the engineering front to make sure everything meets our standards. As it relates to the land use category and how, what we're doing here and how that fits into the water fabric of the community. I've said this in a couple of meetings, and I'll say it again. I think, again, it's a subjective topic, and I think you can debate this topic. I can only tell you what I'm seeing from how I have come from my career and what I've worked on, which is primarily in the development space. Since I've been a planner, what we have here is a large undeveloped piece of property that is right next to Off-Ramp for Interstate. These properties are becoming incredibly rare in the Midwest. These properties are becoming more and more valuable and are being looked at developers more and more enticingly as time goes on. This property, from my perspective again, will not stay a cornfield forever. It just, market forces, and I, I'm not trying to say it should or it shouldn't. I don't think market forces will allow it to do so. That's my opinion, and I just want to be honest about where I'm coming from for that. When it comes to mitigating, that is where we have the tools in our toolbox, is to mitigate the effects of this land use. That's where buffering comes in play, that's where the conditions on traffic comes into play. Lighting was mentioned. We have a very strict, almost goes a little bit farther than dark sky compliant lighting ordinance. We have a noise ordinance. Noise has to be a certain decibel at property line. All of these are enforceable. And we have tried to work closely with the development team and our Township engineers and our other agencies to craft these ordinances in a way that there is no loopholes and they cannot be, they can't be taken advantage of. And there is enforcement mechanisms behind these certain things that the developer would like, like a building permit and like certification of occupancy, are tied to them meeting these conditions. So that's done intentionally, it's done practically. Was there?
How does this land use fit within the master plan?
Yeah, so the master plan, so every community in the state of Michigan has to engage in a current zoning map and a future zoning map. On both of those zoning maps, which are approved by several iterations of the Planning Commission now and several iterations of the Board of Trustees now, call for what we're terming our development district and making that a more commercialized area of the township. Webster Road being a Class A road right off the interstate and having some large lots available has been envisioned to be more of a commercial area for the township. Kind of what maybe started that snowball rolling, as you can see on the satellite imagery, is the installation of originally BSNA in that area, which was one of our larger employers in the township. If no one's aware, that's that cool building with the cool decks that you can see from the highway when there aren't too many leaves in the trees. And then Somerset Apartment Complex, which is a fairly large apartment complex. The Ides own quite a bit of land there and have poked around what they're going to do over the years with that. And then the latest one that has come to fruition was the Lansing Area Food Bank, which is now, again, one of our larger employers in the township. So the wheels were kind of turning in that commercial direction, and we felt like this land use was complementary to those land uses.
Thanks, Miles. Hold on, let's go with, I just want to make sure other people get a voice. Ray?
Miles, I just wanted you to speak on the, I'll just use the term zoning, rezoning, to make that what Judy mentioned, that the Turkish facility should be in an industrial park. How we worked on rezoning that so it is.
Yeah.
The question is rezoning in the area.
Yeah, so there was no rezoning that took place specifically to this development. So we're probably talking about the same thing, but I want to make sure we're using the correct words for many reasons. Rezoning is something that can take place when an applicant is approaching a land use that they are not within the zoning district. They can apply to have that zoning district changed to make them in a zoning district with the appropriate land use. What happened here was the master plan, I think, and this is far before my time, but like 2005 through 2013 time period, that was moved into the development district. And so quasi rezoned at that time, but more just zoning was changed more than it was rezoned to be de-development.
Not industrial?
Industrial land use is a land use permitted by special use permit within the de-development district. The de-development district is our second highest development tier and has a suite of land uses that are permitted within it by right and by special use. When something's permitted by right, it calls for a lower standard of process to go through its approval process. When it's permitted by special use permit, there is wide latitude on the conditions that can be placed on that development, as was done so in this case. Eighteen conditions, by the way, is high.
Thanks, Miles. I saw a hand in the back.
I just have a question about what you're selling as well.
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Casey Hartzoff. I live at one-four-two-eight-three Webster Road, which is basically across the street from here. Couple of questions. You said that you wanted this completed by 2025?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, excuse me. How long will construction take? Because that is quite a bit of noise that would be going on. And where could I get your copies of your studies for the noise that you had stated that had taken place over in Turkey, the decibels? Okay, and then the buffer issue. So that's great that we're putting the buffers up, but what happens if they die in five to 10 years? Is it up to the company to replace the buffers? Is it something we're going to stay on top of? We have other areas here in the community that have buffers that aren't kept up with what they're supposed to be? My last question is police and, or police and fire, and the fire and EMTs. Are they up to par with training to take care of any accidents that occur at your facilities?
Thank you, Casey. Do you want to talk about length of construction and noise?
Sure, thank you. All good questions, especially if you live right across the street. Totally understand all those ones. Construction timeline from the time that we actually break ground, as Cory mentioned, it's moving around a little bit, but that bracket is about eighteen months. So from the time we actually start digging on the site until there's a generally finished building there is about a year and a half. You'd asked for a copy of the noise studies. I'm sure Cory is happy if you provide us with your email to give you the data that we have. I personally can speak to that because I've been to the facilities in Turkey where this is happening. My first instinct, knowing the little that I knew about manufacturing, was that there was going to be like, I guess what I would perceive as a press noise, where you'd have a vertical press just slamming and shaking the ground all the time. That's what I imagined, that was, couldn't have been more wrong. I've stood directly in front of the facility, I don't know, you know, twenty, thirty feet away from the factory wall, and you could basically hear nothing. It sounds like a running car, maybe. One thing that I later learned is that they actually do use presses in their operations, but they use horizontal presses, which doesn't transfer that energy into the ground, causing that big seismic event when it does happen. So it shouldn't be disturbing. I think I know where you live, I might be able to see it through that window. But I don't think, based on what I know, my personal anecdotal experience at their facility, that it would be disturbing to your home. Further, I think I missed something when I was talking about our vision for the site and buffering, which is that we're not developing all the way to Webster Road. We worked together with the landowner, Mr. Kessler, and we kind of did a conceptual master plan of the site, which was a combination of our best judgment and the hundred or so meetings we've been here listening to the community talk about their vision of what the community should be. I've heard over and over and over from Bath residents that they want services and restaurants and that kind of stuff to exist here so that when they're coming in and out of, you know, where it is that they live, they can access those types of things. So we reserved a sizable strip of land along Webster Road in front of this facility that's deep enough to accommodate any modern, you know, strip concept or standalone drive-through restaurant or standalone restaurant concept, so.
Will you show us behind you, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And what does that do to local business?
Hopefully, it would add local businesses to the community when they moved in there. That would be the hope. But if you, if you look at, the facility is actually going to be planted right here. And behind this existing structure, this is a pretty reference point. Some of the trees have recently been removed, but this barn is still there. So a little bit behind this barn and forward, this land right here is all reserved for future development. So you're not going to have a big industrial facility tucked right up to Webster Road. A term that Miles keeps using in the world of planning is step-down. So buffer and step-down are both terms that we use to try to blend, you know, uses between other uses that aren't necessarily harmonious. So, yeah, we've been thinking about that quite a bit. And then I think, you brought up police and fire. We've had a couple conversations with the chief of police and the fire chief, and they've both been very enthusiastic about this project. They see it as an opportunity for them. It does a lot of really great things for the police and fire, creates a big increment of tax that they're able to use for funding their departments. So the general calculus that I think exists is that the increment of taxes created creates more than enough resources for both departments to, you know, deal with any of the additional load that they would have as a result of the facility being there. Further, I mean, it's very close to both departments, so easy for them to access and deal with.
Thanks, Jeff. Miles, Karen, I know both the fire chief and the police chief reviewed this for comment. Did they have any concerns about training, being able to respond to accidents? No, okay.
I just had one more comment.
Go ahead, Casey.
For Webster Road, I thought it had been stated for 2023, do you realize that it is a road commission that does that? Please don't wait. I don't know if you've driven down Webster Road lately. My car got eaten by a pothole the other day. Please don't wait.
Yeah, we understand that. We, one of the conversations that was had when we found out there could be a delay, that there would be some significant patching that would be needed to get us through to whenever that is able to happen.
And Casey, if you, our ordinance do say that you have to have those buffers, and if they die, you have to replace them. So if you know of areas that have had buffers written into their SUP and they are not there anymore, please talk to Miles. That's his job to help enforce that.
Thank you.
Other questions, please, come on. Voices we haven't heard yet? Go ahead, Cindy.
There's a reason I don't come to these meetings, I must say.
I've been busy for the last 10 months. I took on an endeavor to save our low-income housing. When I saw Jeff sitting here, I figured out exactly what's going on. Jeff came in, how many years ago, for your marijuana project? Four, five? I believe Jeff figured out that Bath Township Planning Commission and Township Board are pretty easy for land use. He got some special one-in-done for his marijuana facility over on M-78. Somehow flinagled de-development at our downtown, our DDA district, and you're going to put industrial in there. You're a very smart man, Jeff. You preyed on Bath. And you're going to get what you want for the second time. You need a round of applause, Jeff. When I saw you sitting here, I turned and I said, oh my God, now it all makes sense. I cannot believe that our Planning Commission and our Township Board allowed industrial use on that property. Doesn't have to be a cornfield. But industrial? Give me a break.
Absolutely, Ron.
Good job, Jeff. You deserve all the money you're making off us.
Thanks, Cindy. Is there a member of the Planning Commission who wants to address that? John, Ray?
I don't know what I'll say, but I'll say something.
Well, figure it out, you're about to get up there.
I guess that's kind of a cheap shot, is basically what I want to say. I've been a resident here since 1967, and I've seen the dire job situation go through the community. And I think that something as well-regulated and well-thought-out and as well-planned as this is, which incidentally Jeff's company has done, should indeed have a round of applause, but of congratulations. So we have, in the Planning Commission, and I just, I've been on the Planning Commission going on two years now, and I think that we took every precaution necessary, and even some that weren't necessary, as outlined by the eighteen special limitations, if you will, stipulations. But I think we did a really good job. And I think all of us on the Planning Commission were, how would you say? Irrationally chastised just now. We try to operate just as professionally as we can. And John Wright is the chair of the Planning Commission.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, Ryan. Yes, I'm John Wright, chairman of the Planning Commission. This project has been in the works for a lot longer than actually you stated. Various informal discussions with the Planning Commission. Mr. Kessler has owned this property for a number of years. It's been zoned de-development for a number of years under the master plan. This is a use that's allowed by special use permit in an industrial district, which what this property has been zoned for a number of years. The food bank was built under that category as well. It's a special use development of that type of use. This is a rather intense industrial use in some ways, but not in every way. And I think it took a lot of negotiation on the part of the Planning Commission to come up with eighteen criteria that you've got to comply with to make this successful for everybody involved. And I know that there's always going to be people that are going to object to any change in our environment or our appearance or whatever happens around because there's always a group of people that don't like change. And I think that's something we've all got to learn to live with, is that we are going to change, whether we like it or not. And I think this project has a lot of merit for Bath, and the Planning Commission felt it was an appropriate use of this project to be used here because of the utilities that are available and the road right-ofways and the expressway and the fact that we are, have an opportunity to have a good employer as opposed to maybe somebody that's not quite so good developing our property, our community. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Brian Jeffs also had some environmental questions, so I want to make sure they get heard. And I heard some other folks talk about environmental things. He says he's a retired environmental senior geologist, working with soil and groundwater contamination. Few concerns about air and groundwater contamination, containment of liquid material. We've talked a little bit about that. But how about semi-spills when loading and unloading chemical and hauling away waste? Does that affect the air? Chromium six and other metals, several other. Six and other metals, several other toxic and harmful chemicals. These compounds are used as corrosion inhibitors and in the manufacturing of pigments, metal finishings, and chrome plating. Occupational exposure to hexavalent chromium can occur from inhalation of dusts, mists, or fumes containing hexavalent chromium, or from eye-to-skin contact. Industries with the largest number of workers exposed to high concentrations of airborne hexavalent chromium compounds, including electroplating, welding, and chromate painting. There's a reason I'm not an engineer. Occupational exposure to these compounds is associated with increased risks of lung cancer and cancer of the paranasal sinuses and nasal cavity. Drinking CR6 may be harmful to humans. Studies show that CR6 in drinking water may cause an increased risk of stomach cancer and reproductive harm. Direct contact with CR6 can cause allergic skin reactions in some people. Many residents on Wells could be at risk. Current federal drinking water standard for total chromium is .1 milligrams per liter, or 100 ppb. That's 100 marbles in a container of 1,000 million marbles, which is not very much. This location is highly residential, and what happens if leaks occur, vapor escapes. It's close to our downtown and our schools. I don't know who is best to, go ahead.
So simple. We don't use hexavalent chromium.
Great.
That's all that needs to be said.
Then why'd you make me say it four times?
Norm has not been using hexavalent chromium since I started. I know, it could even been earlier. So since 2016, we have never used hexavalent chromium in our facilities. And there's the same.
Do you lose the chemicals that you do use?
Of course. I mean, you could check. We have shared this information before, and our plan of what we plan to do here in the United States in our, in this facility. Sure. We have, we are, there is a three-phase project. I mean, it's going to take a bit, so I apologize. This is a two-to-three-phase project. We only want the start with cold forging, and heat treatment, and packaging. That's all. We are not planning on doing any coating or plating operations as of now. So this means this is not going to be done in Bath. It could be in five years, in 10 years, could never, we may never even do it. So we are talking about ifs, and especially about hexavalent chromium. It does not exist. So you spent two minutes reading it. Perfect information. Literature, great, but we don't use it.
Okay. Thanks, Craig.
Sure.
Other questions, comments? Feel free to head up to the lectern. Go ahead.
Is the food court a Class A road?
It is. It's a side road.
Yes.
I think it's Class A in the aspect that it can take. I think they have to classify it like that because of the shipping capabilities of the road. But when, I guess when I say class, I'm going to go up.
Thank you.
So I'm not a traffic engineer, so sometimes I loosely, as I was saying earlier, I like to use terms correctly, but I guess I use a term incorrectly. When I say Class A road, I'm talking about a road that is widely used for all types of vehicles, at high rates throughout the township. So some roads that come to mind are like Coleman Road, Old M-78, Webster Road, Chandler Road. When I think about Food Court Lane, I see it as a side road, a tiered road.
So the county weight restrictions would apply to that road?
No, they do apply to that road, but that is a road that's been certified for traffic of shipping, because the food bank now has to rely on deliveries from tractor trailers. And this development will obviously have, be bringing in semis to deliver materials and take materials away.
Thanks, Miles. Let's do a last call for questions or comments on this or any other issue.
My name is John Barnard. I live at 5717 Chestnut Street. Been a lifetime resident here. My father started a manufacturing business on the corner of Clark and Watson Road back in 1966. Been with a family business doing manufacturing since I was, the year I was born. Norm Fanciners has pledged to bring a manufacturing facility here and train the industrial base, bring that back to our area. There's no skilled trades. I work in skilled trades every day. There's no skilled young individuals available that want to take on the task. They're willing, I mean, we don't even have shop class in Bath High School anymore. And going to college isn't for everybody. So trades is a great, they're money-making, steady work. They are not directly involved with the automotive industry, which fluctuates and has strikes and, you know, ups and downs. They source multiple venues, so it should be a steady work pattern. It should bring good wages and good skills for our kids, grandkids, whatever, is a good field. And with the way they're building the new facility, so everything's contained, they're using European standards, not U.S. standards, and process treating. A lot of stuff is water-based, not solvent-based, so it's easily refined. So I support this manufacturing business wholeheartedly in Bath Township. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Barnard. Any other folks with comments or questions before we wrap up?
I just have one quick reaction. You talked about phasing in the business as you started going. Judy was wondering what chemicals you guys do use. So those two things. I didn't understand the phasing.
The question was, as the phases, I'm just repeating for the folks at home. Sorry. The question is for the folks, for phasing in to two and three, what chemicals may be used in those processes?
So in automotive industry, there are two types of typical coating that's applied. One of them is called electroplating, but that does not mean it's hexavalent chromium. As I said, Norm and Automotive Industry is not using hexavalent chromium for, since 2016, as far as I know, because that's when I joined this company. Chromium, trivalent chromium is a different thing. It's not hexavalent chromium. So what we do is electroplating, and we also do what's called zinc flake coating. So those are the two types that we do in Turkey right now. So for the U.S., we have still not decided exactly whether we're going to be doing this going forward, which also actually affects our program. But we are considering, because world is changing every day. Today is different, tomorrow's going to be different. EU regulations, U.S. regulations, we have to follow the rules. So Norm is not going to take any action that's against the law, regulations of the state, Michigan, state of Michigan, or the federal government. So we'll be following what we are allowed to do. So, I mean, I can give you a lot of different names of chemical producers, but most likely you have not heard of them. Don't get me wrong, you might be in Automotive Industry. If you are, I'll be more than happy to share everything, because I have even a list of licenses that we have from chemical producers with me right now. So it's not that, but it's a list. You will see 20 different companies. One of them is in Japan, one of them is in Germany, one of them is in Michigan, one of them is in another state in the U.S. We work with France producers, chemical producers as well, German. So I understand the concerns, and I am 100% with you, but I will live there. So it's not only the residents of Bath Township. I will be living there myself. And I'm a Northwestern grad with a master's in business and engineering. So I don't think we will be taking any action, or anyone should be thinking so naive that I will take that risk of, you know, sharing wrongful information here with anyone that will affect our company in the future.
Thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we move to close up today? Go ahead.
I'm Nicole Gabriel, 13732 Main. I just want to clarify what I think I understand. So at onset, this is a stamping plant, but at longer-term end state, this is a galvanizing operation that involves many more chemicals than it does at the beginning stages of what we're kind of entering in and starting at. Am I understanding that correctly?
We have shared the final layout and what we plan to build at the end as well. So everything we shared is not about today or what we plan to do next year. This is all the information on our final layout.
Right.
So everything that's been shared with the engineers and, sorry, apologize. Everything shared contains all the information you will, or the town of Bath Township will see in our waste, or whatever's going to come out, light, air, vibration, decibel, whatever. Everything has been shared fully. So whatever we have shared includes all. So it's not about, we're not talking about what you will see in two years compared to five years or 10 years.
Well, I kind of feel like at onset of project, we should be talking about what it is going to be, right? I mean, this is not just one little project.
It's much less than what it could be.
Well, and it is for an industrial operation, but this isn't the South Side of Chicago, you know. So I do think that there's some very valid concerns, and I just want to make sure that it's understood that we're talking much more than just this simple, safe stamping plant at the end of this project. And I just want to make sure that all of my neighbors understand what I'm hearing, and that I clarify that I'm hearing the right thing from you.
No, actually, I think I misspoke then.
Yep.
Because first of all, it's not a stamping plant.
Yeah.
Stamping is different in the industry terms of process. So this is a cold forging process to start.
Cold forging.
Cold forging. It's called cold forging.
C-O-L-D.
Yeah, C-O-L-D, sorry. So what I'm trying to say is, your concerns are fine, but you're not going to be seeing that. This is not a heavy industrial plant. This is even, can be called a light industrial.
Right. Well, and I think light industrial, heavy industrial probably is lost on a lot of us that don't do things like zoning for a living. I used to work in a galvanizing plant, so I'm a little bit more familiar with what electroplating and, you know, powder coating and all these different things are, and what kind of waste, because I've also worked in special waste. So, yeah, I've got a better idea of kind of what you're saying, like that simple first onset idea is not the end state of the project, which is with any project, that's the way it goes, right? But this, I think, is a much more industrial end than this little bit of water we're dipping our toes in at the beginning. And I just don't want anybody to be blindsided by that.
No, just what I wanted to say is, we have shared not what we're going to do in two years. We have shared all the results and analysis of what we will be giving out at the end of five years, if we go to that three years. So it's not less than what we have shared. It is exactly what will come out.
Right. Just what we're talking about.
Given today's technology. And every day, it's changing and it's improving as well. So all I can say is that. So it's not that, I mean, we are not trying to hold off any information and sharing only what you will see in two years. As a matter of fact, we are doing just the opposite. We're giving you the whole picture, what might come out at the end, which is controlled by the engineers and SCUMA and other agencies, and approved before the planning committee and commission and the board of trustees have approved.
Which I appreciate. I just want to make sure that even though our discussions have been focused on the beginning state, that we're all on the same page of the full spectrum, that everything shared is part of this project plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And the eighteen provisions that have been set forth by the planning commission and the board has taken in the full idea of the footprint of the project. So you'll see if, and we should probably make those available to folks, Miles. If you take a look at them, you'll see that the planning commission has thoroughly thought through these things and made sure that the developers and the company have answered these questions, are mitigating our concerns in order to get that nonconditional approval to move forward. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I really appreciate your interest, your questions, your comments, your concerns. I think it's very healthy and helpful for us to engage with each other. I know it feels like this may be the first time folks are hearing about the project. We have been working on this for a long time, so it's helpful to be able to invite you all in to hear the details, ask the questions, and share your concerns. I want to give a special thanks to Dimaxian for joining us, Norm, our friends from LEAP and ME-DC and SCUMA for helping us to understand the project. A huge thanks to our staff who have been ushering this along and who have been representing all of us as neighbors and community members in these negotiations, Miles and Beth especially, and Karen, our superintendent. And thanks to the planning commissioners. Again, will you wave your hand around if you're a planning commissioner? George, that's you, too. These folks have been working on this project for over a year, and they're volunteers. They're our neighbors. They're the folks who are, again, representing you and me at that decision-making. And thanks to our board of trustees as well. With that, we'll go to our last board member comments and adjourn and open up the next meeting. Kate, do you want to start us out?
Maybe go first. I will say that...
You'll all have a time to transition if you want to hold on a moment.
I will say that this was one of the first agenda items when I came to this board. So it was sort of a jump in headfirst to the board of trustees. But I really tried to put in as much research time as I could. I watched many planning commission meeting videos, and read the minutes, and read through the many, many conditions. But I think what had the most impact on me, and if you don't know, my regular job is that I'm a teacher, and so I'm a public educator, was when the school board president got up here and offered their full support of this project, knowing that the tax money that would come to Bath Township, and specifically to Bath Community Schools, would make a significant impact for them. When I looked at those dollar amounts, that was teachers that we could hire, that was staff that could help support our students, that was programs that we could offer to our community and to the children that live here. And also, it might be trade internships or co-ops available to our high school students. It could also be an increase in student growth, which is make or break for school districts in the state of Michigan, if families are moving to our area because they're now employed at this facility. So I think that was the most important thing, and I think that was one factor that was not touched on at all tonight. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. That had a really significant impact on my decision-making in this process.
Thanks, Kate. Hal? Brenda?
I just want to thank all the speakers and everybody for staying. I think there's a lot of information given. So I just want to thank everybody. It was really good.
Thanks. I just want to invite folks to read more about the project. I'm going to ask our staff to put together a frequently asked questions, pulled from some of the questions you all have asked. This is not the beginning and end of your ability to ask questions. If you go onto the township website, you will find all of our email addresses. Please give us your feedback, give us your thoughts, share up, share, follow through with other questions. Tell us what you're thinking. And also, I'd love to hear feedback on if this format was helpful, if this type of meeting was helpful. That'll help us determine whether we should do these things in the future. So as you think about the project, I'd like you to keep learning and certainly ask those questions, and really challenge some of the gut reaction that folks, including me, had when I first heard about this, which is sort of that not-in-my-backyard mentality. I do think there's a lot of opportunity here for our students, as Kate mentioned, and for our residents. I'm excited that this plant is going to be within walking distance from some of our low-income housing. I think that's exciting, that those folks could have access to these jobs as well. And thanks again for coming. Jeff?
Just thanks for coming, everybody. Very informational.
Jeff?
I would like to say thanks to everybody that presented here. In order to bring about a deeper and better understanding of what some people try to drive as false conclusions about what's been said here. And then I'd just like to also say to Mr. Dehan, I really apologize that there was personal attacks brought into this today, because that's not the direction we really want to go in at these meetings. So my apologies that that happened to you. We don't really need that here, but it happens occasionally.
Thanks, Jeff. Sure?
Few comments. One, the Chromium Six incident in California, wasn't five, it was Chromium Six, that degrades into PFOS. And I had a big question for this company. Are, will you sign an agreement to never use PFOS? Michigan is the worst state in the United States for PFOS contamination. I asked that question. Not in the first year, we're not going to use it. No, that was not my question. Can we take it in the contract that it will never be used in our township? And the answer was, we could not agree with that. My other question would come along to average pay. Does that include management? What's the average pay for the starting person who comes from low-income housing and starts there? That's a different issue altogether. Because I didn't understand any of that, I was the only board in... only board member that voted no. We needed to understand a lot more about this. And I am very concerned about our marshland here, our water contamination, which was what happened in California. And is there a bond set up by this company? In California, it was only 700 million for the Chromium Six that turned into PFAS, and I think we should be aware of that. That's all.
Thanks.
And I'm sorry you were attacked, too. I don't agree with that.
Before we adjourn, I forgot our great engineer from Pryon Newhoff. Thank you as well for being here. I didn't mean to leave you off that list. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will adjourn.
I'll support it. A motion in a second. Any discussion, concerns? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. We will give five-minute transition time. If you'd like to stay and join us for the regular meeting, you're welcome to do so, but also feel free to head out if you'd like.